It's always something.
Call to order. Roll call.
Here.
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 Here. Everybody present? Need a motion to amend the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
I'll say. Keith and Noel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So what we're gonna do first is we'll gather out here in the lobby, and they're gonna make a presentation, and so we'll just move out there.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. In September of eighteen, actually in early September, we started the project to bring Vietnam to Maldives. And it was very successful, over 20,000 visitors. We put a shadow box together for each of the veterans from Ava and Douglas County that was killed in Vietnam. We also had benches made for each of those families. And four of those families took their benches home, donated to the families, to the families we could not locate. But today, we'd like to donate this to Ava and Douglas County as a permanent display, so that all the people in Douglas County can see and appreciate the work the veterans have done. Our Commander, Ben Schenender, will take over and do the talking. Please.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you for letting us speak here tonight, receiving. And with nothing more to do, I'll start down there and introduce these people, shadow boxes, and they can go from there. First shadow box would be David Marshall Knight. He attended Ava High in fifty-seven through sixty. He did move from here before he graduated. He entered the military in nineteen sixty-three. He was deployed to Vietnam in nineteen sixty-five. David was killed from enemy fire in March of sixty-six. Mayor and City Council, it's my sorrowful honor to present to you Specialist David Knight.
As a relative, they allowed me to say a few words. Me and David were cousins. He was five months older than me. We joined the service together. I said many times, it's kinda humorous how the Army works, because we joined on a buddy system. Me and him and a guy named Don Mellor. The physical in Kansas City was the last time we was together. Me and David went to Fort, now I don't know what happened to Don, but me and David went to Fort Leonard Wood for basic. We both, we was in different companies, but we was on the same posts. We both went to Fort Polk, Louisiana, in different companies, but on the same post. We both spent a year in Korea, different battalions. We both went to Vietnam in August of sixty-five. Yeah, excuse me, it's, thinking back on David, it's sometimes a little tough, because we were really close. On March thirtieth of nineteen sixty-six, we got word that David had been killed. He was a, he was in the Arm Triangle at South Vietnam. He was a tank man. They had pulled into a minefield, and he was sitting on the track of a tank, waiting for the minesweepers to come through. And one of the minesweepers stepped on a mine in front of him. He was the only one that got killed. He had a piece of scrap metal that went through his left eye and into his brain. David Marshall Knight, I salute you.
Second one, George Layton. He graduated high school here in nineteen sixty-one. He entered the military after college. He was deployed to Vietnam in November of sixty-seven. George was killed from enemy fire twenty-one March sixty-eight. Mayor and City Council, it's my sorrowful honor to present to you Captain George Layton.
One comment about David Knight. David was a good athlete. I played football and basketball with David. He left here for his senior year and went to Marshfield, where they won third in the state in what was then Class N. We just had three classes. He was a good athlete. George Layton. Of course, I knew his dad, Leonard, his mother Claire. Claire was a second grade teacher when I was in school, and she retired here as a teacher. His folks were wonderful. Also knew his older sister, who was a year ahead of me in school, and George was a year behind. So George was a fine young man. And it's my privilege to be able to present this to you in honor of George Layton.
Last one of three, Dale Posey. I could find no dates on him. He entered the military in nineteen sixty-eight. He was deployed to Vietnam in nineteen sixty-eight. Dale was killed from enemy fire in sixty-eight, in May of sixty-eight. Mayor and City Council, it's my sorrowful honor to present to you Specialist Five Dale Lane Posey. Lester Cleo McGinnis II. He attended Ava High School nineteen sixty-one through sixty-five. Dale, Lester graduated in sixty-five. He entered the military in nineteen sixty-eight. He was deployed to Vietnam in nineteen sixty-eight. Lester Cleo. I was raised with Lester Cleo down in the Smollet. He was kind of a cocky lad, fun-loving, got around good. Everybody liked him. He was killed from enemy fire in October of nineteen sixty-eight. Sergeant Lester Cleo McGinnis. Henry Ralph Longston. Attended Ava High in nineteen sixty-five. He graduated high school in nineteen sixty-five. He entered the military in nineteen sixty-seven. Deployed to Vietnam in sixty-eight. Henry was killed from enemy fire in October of sixty-eight. Mayor and City Council, it's my sorrowful honor to present to you Lance Corporal Henry Ralph Longston. John Edward Ray. Attended Ava High School in forty-seven through fifty-one. He graduated in fifty-one. He entered the military in nineteen fifty-three. He was deployed into Vietnam in nineteen sixty-eight. John was killed from enemy fire May thirteenth nineteen sixty-nine. Mr. Mayor, City Council, it's my sorrowful honor to present to you Sergeant First Class John Edward Ray.
I'm John Edward Ray's youngest brother. There's eleven of us children, six boys and five girls. Ed was born in thirty-two. I was born fifteen years later in forty-seven. I barely remember him being home before he joined the Army and moved away. One of the things that I do remember about Ed, he was friendly and easy to get along with. He was tough if he had to be, and he didn't mind being tough too much. But he was a good rasher. But I remember one time when I was three, maybe four years old, Dad and Mom went to town, left us boys and a couple of girls to fend for ourselves at lunchtime. They wasn't gonna be back for lunch. We went in, sat down at a long table, 'cause you bear in mind eleven kids and Mom and Dad, but some of them was already married and gone when I was born. And Ed was the oldest one there. I was used to being coddled and babied and spoiled. And I sat down at the table, and I was awaiting good hot food like I would normally get. And Ed got tired of my griping and complaining. He picked up a cold biscuit from breakfast at the other end of the table, and all country boys can throw a rock. Well, that biscuit was about as hard as a rock, and he nailed me right between my eyes. And boy, I'll tell you what, I shut up and ate a cold biscuit and enjoyed it. But Ed loved the service. It was the easiest thing he had ever done, and he got paid for it. That was probably the best part. He met his wife in West Point, up in New York. He was stationed there for a while. Stationed different places in the United States, Germany, Iceland, maybe another foreign country that I don't remember. Missed Korea just barely, but then got sent to Vietnam in August of sixty-eight. Got killed over there, killed in action, May thirteenth nineteen sixty-nine. Before he got killed, I was over there at the same time on an aircraft carrier. I was in the Navy. I used to go up on the flight deck of a night, dark nights, and miles away, you could see our bombs being dropped and the flares from them going up. And I would wonder, where's Ed? That John Edward, that we called him Ed, you know, where's Ed? There was times when we might've been as close as fifty to a hundred and fifty miles, you know, but it might as well have been a million. Well, I came home before his year was up, six months, and then went back over there. I was in San Diego when I got word that he had been killed. All I know is, knowing Ed the way I did, he, my hero. All my brothers and sisters were heroes of mine. They took care of me. I was the baby. But I think I said that before. But anyway, I guess that's about all there is to tell. But he left a wife and five kids to raise, you know, and some, one or two of them remember him, the rest of them don't. But while he was over there, and he got to come home on emergency leave for a month or so, but his wife had a lot of trouble having the baby. He had four girls. She gave birth to a baby boy while he was home, John Edward Ray Jr. He was born on my birthday, nineteen sixty-nine. They told John, Johnny, Edward, Ed, that he didn't have to go back over due to hardship. He said, "No, I want to go over and see my men home safe." He went back over there. It really got hot. And May thirteenth, he gave his life for this country, for you and for me and for all of us. And, you know, everybody that's gave their lives in every war for the freedom of this country, let's not forget them.
Amen.
Let's not forget them. Thank you.
Unfortunately, we were unable to locate the families of two of the benches that we had. So we decided to honor them by allowing the public to use them as they view the shadow boxes and reflect on their service and sacrifice. Mayor, City Council, I present to you and all who walk by this lobby the benches for Lance Corporal Langston and Sergeant McGinnis. Mr. Mayor, City Council, that is the final thing we can do. And I thank you for your time and for letting us place these in City Hall that people can see them and appreciate them. Appreciate the sacrifice that these boys have done.
We'll probably just spoil them. And I wanna thank each one of you for time served. And sometimes we forget about the families of the ones that have served. And but I wanna let you know that we owe you the freedoms that we enjoy today, and quite often we forget about that. We do. And let's just keep it in our minds, the freedoms that you all have allowed us to have, and we appreciate that so much, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Luke, did you have the book?
Yeah, it's in my drawer.
We put together that two-hundred-page memory book of the wall and all the activities, and we're gonna donate another one to the city, can be out here on display for the public to use and look at and browse at their, so it's our honor to let you have that book also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting us come in.
I'm gonna start while you're getting coffee, Stan. Okay. Has everybody had a chance to go over the minutes?
Yes.
Any changes or? They will accept the minutes as presented. Go on, finish, Ben. Miss Peggy, did you have anything that you was on the finances that you wanna share with us?
No, you had your financial reports for the end of January. The end of January at two point four million, a little over that. And I looked today, and right now, we're at a little over two point five million. So making a little progress, staying steady.
Do you have anything else? Have any comments from Alden? I guess it's on me, then. Most of this is just an update. And I'm not sure that, how many has been aware? We've had trouble with the trash truck, and it's had to do with the dab on it. So we ended up having to take it to International and reprogram it. But anyway, they found a short end, and it had, luckily, they caught it before it done a lot of damage. But anyway, we had to take it actually back to International and reprogram their computer on it. So we should get it back this week. I didn't, I don't, I haven't got major to wear of that one. But on the clarifier, we talked about it the last meeting we had, at the wastewater treatment plant. There was a bearing out on the top side of it. And I believe I told you it was going at eighteen hundred dollars was the price of the bearing. And it's in, and it's almost that much. Just almost seventeen hundred dollars, give the bearing for them. But that's a lot of money. But that clarifier's thirty years old. And so if we can get by another thirty years with a, yeah. Doing pretty good. That's not too bad. Nothing to complain about. But anyway, it's back up and running. It was eighteen hundred on the bearing, and approximately seventeen the label put it back in. And it's, it's a big job. I went over and looked at it, just to get an idea of what it entailed. And it was a big job. Anyway, it's back in operation.
Is there more that we'll be doing? I was thinking, was there one more that we have to do?
No, I think you're getting it mixed up with our filters. Now, we've got, we done one filter this physical year. And hopefully, we might, if we can get enough money, we'll do another one this, the next, twenty twenty-one. But we've got one filter done, which is very expensive.
Yes, they are.
And this past Monday, Monday and Tuesday, we had a field survey crew down at the airport, Bill Martin Memorial Airport, and they were, and it had to do with getting good beds for the runway lights. And what they did, they, the elevations, they shot the elevations. They drilled down in, along the side of the runway, three feet deep. I don't know why they drilled three feet deep at random to see if there was gonna be any rock encounters. And as far as I know, the drilling went all right. So, you know, a lot of that air force on the field. So hopefully, hopefully, we won't, there shouldn't be any issues about, we should get firm beds if there's not any solid rock in. So but anyway, they done that Monday and Tuesday. Okay, I'm gonna go on order, 'cause if I don't, I'll skip something. This is something that we need to make a decision on. I'd like to make a decision on tonight, on a position for the sanitation department. I'd like to get that process started, you know, for the month of March, and possibly put somebody on full-time in first of April. And we're gonna have a retirement coming up in June. So I'd like to get, you know, get started on that, because more than likely, whoever we are is not gonna be certified CDL and all that, and we need, we need the CDL permit to be able to drive a trash truck and everything. So I know that's a ways, a little ways off, but I'd like to make preparations now and start looking. Gotta give us about thirty days, give us a month of March, to then go through Pem Mac, and then maybe secure somebody by the first of April. If, and I'd like to have a motion to go on, carry on with that if I could. And I'll make the motion. Stand. You have a second?
I'll second it.
Bill? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
An update on the community development block grant is the project down on the square. Anderson Engineering got all those, was that a week ago or two weeks ago? Anyway, they've got the plans done, and they've got, the plans are with MODOT. And if MODOT okay's everything, we should, I like to get in the bidding process pretty quick, and the sooner the better on that. So that's just an update on that CDVG grant. So hopefully, we can, we was wanting to get bids left as soon as we can. And it looks like providing MODOT is okay with what we've got drawed up at this point, we can go with it. And I'm going through this pretty quick. You got any questions, just stop me, okay? Okay, most of yous, I think you're all aware of the cardboard. There's no market for cardboard right now. So the cardboard that was being picked up here in town, that's just completely dried up. It's not, nobody's picking it up, because it's, there's no money in it. So it's creating a little bit of a problem for us, because the guys, there are days they can't run their whole route without having to go dump. So it's putting more tonnage in the landfill than what they can typically haul on a regular route or daily route. So Stan and I, let's see, what day was that? Anyway, we'd been visiting with Cersei. Jeff Cersei downtown, down south of town. And he told us, or we brought this proposal to him. If we can, if you loan us these trailers, we can put them back in some of our heavy areas. And if we can spot your trailers and then fix our own trailer up, and we're in the process of doing that right now. And I think we pretty well got it done. Spotting his trailers and us, our employees picking the cardboard up in high-use areas. We don't know if it's gonna be once a week, twice a week. We don't know. We don't know what to expect. But we gotta, we need to do something to keep as much land, or cardboard out of that landfill as we can and quit making extra trips at work. So is it gonna be profitable for us? No, it's not gonna be. But it's gonna save us a little bit on tonnage that we don't have to pay for, and maybe extra trips. And we're in a, maybe we can get a little extra help through some, with some grant money in the future. And I did tell the Cersei boy upfront. I said, "Now, when the market comes back, we're not gonna continue doing this." But it will, it'll come back. It's just like everything else. It runs a cycle. And he understood that, that we may have to do it for a year. It may be three years. I don't know. And but we visited with some of the places where the most cardboard's at. And I was in hopes of getting some of those trailers out this week. But it's so muddy, and I went down and looked, and they're just setting down in the field. And I, I don't think I can get in there, we can get in there with our pickups and pull them out without tearing these fields up. So hopefully, next week, we can spot, you know, maybe, I'm hoping to start out with a half a dozen and just spot them out of town, and then just play it by ear and see where I need to put these things at. So are these, are these box trailers, what you're talking about? It's the ones that, actually, they started out with, Doko had them originally, and then they got them down here. But he said that he would spot them, or we could use them and spot them, and then just offload off of them. And we're in the process of fixing our own trailer up to offload and then take it to him. It's gonna be a little inconvenient for a while trying to figure out how to do this, but that's the only way I know. Dude, just jump in and figure it out, just figure it out, figure it out as we go, and we can do that. So are we gonna ban this cardboard? Or just gonna put it in their booth? No, we're gonna put it in our trailers. I've got sides like cattle pound. And we're gonna put it in there, and he's gonna bail them down there. Okay, he's gonna bail them, okay. All, all of them in the other counties are suffering just like we are. Cardboard is bundled in a huge, big bundle. It's heavy. And it's a, where they were getting three hundred dollars a bundle. And now, the last I heard, it was twenty dollars. Has it gone broke back? Twenty was the last I heard, and it might, and that's why, and they can just keep it, well, they were putting it back, because it fluctuated a little bit off of three hundred, but the bottom never fell out of it. And I, we don't know why the bottom fell out of this cardboard. No one's ever told us. But to go from three hundred to twenty is, that's just almost unbelievable. But if it comes back, we'll get out of the business, because they'll want it back. But the only way he'll bail it is if he gets it, if we'll take it to him. And we are really, I believe we're saving a little money, but because we don't have to make those trips and pay the tipping fee. But if we can just break even. If we're willing to break even. But that's, that's, it's just pretty unbelievable that something that's been there so long. And that was their cash cow, was, I mean, the plastic and all of that was fine, but their cash cow was cardboard. And then it just, I'd like for somebody to tell me why. That's just, I think, like I mentioned a while ago, everything seems to run a cycle, you know. There'll be years of cattle pressure up, and then they'll just go to nothing. But anyway, I think my hope is it's a cycle, and it'll come back in a year or two. That's my hopes. And he seemed to think, Mr. Cersei seemed to think it would come back too. So, and he's actually doing it. So and he's actually doing us a favor. But anyway, he was, I think he told me, I'm pretty sure he told me it was, he was paying a hundred and seventy-five dollars a week just to get somebody to come up and get it and take it. So and it was, he wasn't even getting, recouping that back on what he was bailing. So we're going to, we're going to experiment with this. And it'll take us a little while to figure out just exactly how we can operate it and as efficient as we can. But we'll do it with personnel that we've got. So but anyway, I hope if it dries up to where we can get those trailers out, I'd like to start doing that next week. So that's the plan. So and I've talked to some of the supervisors and they're on board about with their extra help and just everybody working together and getting it all hauled down there. And it might be one trip a week, maybe two, I don't know. I'm not sure what it may be, but we'll figure it out. The generators were just about, and it may be completely done. But it's just, the three generators are, this one here come online. It won, they hooked it up Friday and they already had PD hooked up. But this one went on Friday afternoon. And yesterday morning, it was just a, just a quick flick here and it come on. So it's cycled to come on at nine o'clock every Monday morning. And I don't know how many minutes it runs, but.
Thirty minutes.
Thirty, but anyway.
He's upset for thirty minutes.
It come on and so quick that.
And obviously runs this into thirty minutes.
Thirty?
Yeah, thirty minutes.
And it keeps it towards thirty, doesn't it?
But anyway, nothing went down. And matter of fact, I think I asked Peggy if she noticed the lights flickering. And I think I asked Suzanne and, no. So it was too early for Peggy.
Yeah, I don't know.
But anyway, it happened. I mean.
Just blink your eyes. Computers are good.
Did not affect it. That's what I was concerned about. It did not affect it. So anyway, and we wrote a large check today to pay for our percentage of the FEMA grant. So but the FEMA grant will actually close out March the fourth, I believe is what I wrote down in there. But we'll close it out March the fourth. And if they're not done at the treatment plant, they will be today or tomorrow. I'm satisfied. So that project's just about, just about completely done. So which is good to get it finished up. We'll need a motion on this. Sherry at for the parks over there, that just seems crazy to me that she's already wanting to come up with personnel for the.
Don't even go in those.
No, it's just, it's just going to be the same ones. So for the swim team, Kelly Williams. Baseball team director, Brad Evans. Joyce Walters, life guard and instructor and manager. We just need a motion to, if you're okay with that, just need a motion to put them back on the staff sunscreen.
One of them, she's got a pay increase on them?
We just need a motion for them to go on, back on staff. Is all we need really on this.
That's an automatic thing?
Yeah. But we just, if you're okay with that staff, we just need a motion on that. And it's the same staff that she had last year.
I'll make the motion that we had said it. The park director's recommendations for free hiring.
That's Kelly, Brad and Joyce. Do we have, we got a motion, we have a second on that? We got Noel. Any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Another deal with the parks. The, that, what do you call it, the awning, sun shade or whatever that is at the park? We've got one on the west side. I don't know if you all are familiar with the shady area. It's a.
Candle lever, candle lever. I've had a, a T.
It's a candle lever.
Yeah.
A candle levered awning is what I'll call it. But anyway, I've got a question. No. Well, I just don't know where you got that.
Where you got that? I heard I let you see it.
I don't want to see that. I'm not sure what you all have got, but what.
Those are, you took measurements and.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. What you all have got are awnings that are huge. But I want something, I wanted something to match exactly what we got over there. And we don't have, that's just a little narrow script. So at least Sherry did get things.
That doesn't mean anything.
No, no. And they're way too big. But anyway, and it's good because this is a lot cheaper. But the awning that we got over there is twelve foot wide and it's thirty foot long and eight foot tall. But anyway, what I'd like to do before summer, before the pool, this summer anyway, is put another one just to the south of that. And what I got in mind, that's a blue one on the north. And I called them in Florida this morning and they were afraid the blue that we had wouldn't match. So I said, "Have you got a yellow or a gold?" And they said they had a canary yellow. I said, "Well, that would probably look pretty good with two colors." But anyway, that particular awning, twelve foot wide, thirty foot long and eight foot tall, like what we've got. And like Peggy said, it's a T, T awning. It's just got a pole on each end and just a T shape. But anyway, we can get that awning for eighty-five, eight thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars. And I'd like to get one of those and put on with.
And is that not from the same company?
Yes.
So it will match what we've got.
And it's less money than what the other ones were going to cost.
And then it'll, it'll match what we've got.
And we've been needing it for a long time and just kept putting it off and putting it off. But I would, for the coming season, I'd like to, you know, if you're in agreement on that, I'd like to get one more and put up and.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah, we need a motion, I think. It's eight thousand five hundred, I think it'd be better if we.
I'll make a motion to purchase a new awning.
Okay. We got a motion too. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Billy, is any further discussion on it? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Nice, a canary yellow.
Yeah, that's good. That's good.
I wonder, are we planning on making this purchase here pretty soon before?
Yeah, when I talked to them this morning, they said that they, they make them. You know, like we call now and they'll make it. But it's, I think, six to eight weeks to get it. So.
So that would put it in May, April, November.
Do they crank them down to the end of February?
No, 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 they put them there, they're there. And then when summer's over, they take them down and put them, which I'm glad they do because it's going to make them last much longer. And but.
That way, we can get it in on this budget.
Yeah, that was the plan, getting in on this year's budget. We didn't, we didn't do the pool, or not the pool, the bathroom. So this will work out and we could get that taken care of. I made some money scribbled on here, but I don't even know where I'm at. I'll just, just for your information, Peggy mentioned to me this. Last week, I guess we're already starting to think about a budget for the coming year, which is July. So that's how far ahead we have to start planning. Peggy has to start planning. So I'll leave most of it up to Peggy. But we do visit about it. But we're already in that stage of like, plan for the next budget. For your information, a meeting ago or two, and this has to do with the budget also, we checked on a building for the street department, which is, the one we've got is terrible. And we're looking to replace it. And we went over and visited with white industry, white metal industry or something like that. Willow. And I got a quote from them on a building, fifty by a hundred red iron. And that quote, at this point, was thirty-four thousand. Now, that's just, that's just a red iron and the metal gathering, one entrance door, framed openings for two large garage doors and two small garage doors. Now, that's not counting the doors. But it was thirty-four, that's the round numbers, thirty-four thousand for the metal. But we needed, and that's got, they'll have an engineer stamp on it. And the plans will, but it doesn't have a footing plan. And so I called Miller Engineering out of Springfield. And I called them about two weeks ago and asked Travis Miller if he would engineer a set of footing for us on this building because I don't want to put a building up and something happen. And they said, "Well, you didn't have an engineer." And but anyway, Travis said he would engineer it for twelve hundred dollars. And I called him yesterday and asked him where he was at. And he said, "I should have a set of footing plans engineered by the end of this week." But with the metal package, the footing, engineered footing, we should be able to put some numbers together this summer and have that, you know, all ready for the twenty-twenty-one budget. So I'm just going to let you know where we was at on that.
I'm pleasantly surprised that we got that bid for that. I think that's a, that's a red iron. That's.
But anyway, that's a fifty by a hundred. And I think you would agree with me if you went over there and looked at what they're. I, you know, if there was a leak on that roof over there, I wouldn't send one of our guys up on that roof to fix it. So I just wouldn't do it.
You need to go.
Did you go by? It's, but anyway, it's something that we've.
I'm going to put hold.
It's going, we're going to have to give it some, give it some thought and attention or something. I just, it's too far gone, I think, to rebuild. And I'm glad that you haven't looked at it. And that's real helpful that you get a visual and you kind of see what we're talking about. And I think that's good. I don't have anything else for. Open. Did we have anything to close?
Just a minute.
You want to go into close and accept the minutes or what do you want to do?
I'm done. I'm going forward. You want to do it?
Do it and open? Do I have a motion to accept the closed minutes for January fourteenth, twenty-twenty?
Aye, let's do it.
We got a motion from Stan. Do we have a second? Keith, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? I make a motion, we adjourn. Billy, a second?
As well.
Yep, Noel? All in favor?